Good evening, welcome to the September 9th workshop meeting for Pasco City Council. We have agendas available on the corner desk over here, or if you want a more detailed council packet is available in advance through this city's website, which is also where we televise our meetings as well as Facebook Live and then also on Charter Cable. If you get a chance to speak this evening, if you'd come up here and share your name with us for record keeping, we'd be thankful. And finally, if you have any cell phones, I'd ask you to mute those so that the meeting isn't interrupted. And noting that Ms. Barajas and Mr. Martinez are absent this evening, we'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Great. Alvarado.
Present.
Maloney.
Here.
Martinez. Oh, excuse me. Melney.
Present.
Serrano.
Here.
And Watkins.
Here. And five of us here will join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Third item on the agenda, verbal reports from council members. Anybody attend an event or an item they wish to share with council? Mr. Milton.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Yes, on Tuesday, I was had the pleasure of representing the city for the renaming of the Track Center. It was now the Happo Center. So it was really well attended, and again, it was a pleasure to give the proclamation on that. And then on Thursday, I had my Parks and Rec meeting. So it was good that we finally had a quorum, we had four members, and give a shout out to Zach. He did a great job of presenting everything, and I won't spoil the fun because it's on our CIP plan, but just some exciting things happening this upcoming year in the city of Pasco.
Thank you. Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two items to report on. Last Saturday, there was River Fest down by the Columbia River, put on, I think, by the Pasco Chamber of Commerce, and that was just a fantastic event. A whole lot of people, I think they said there were 4,500 people came out to come see a lot of exhibitions, both in support of our dams and as well as just celebrating and helping people understand, here's what the river brings to our community. It's a pretty big deal, right? To make sure that people really understand how important that is, both from an economic development perspective, as well as a recreation and cultural experience as well. Also, on Saturday evening, I attended the Monarca Wine, which is at the Kennewick's Wine Village down on Columbia Drive. They had an immigrants' art show that was just an absolutely fantastic experience. Some spoken word poetry by a number of folks, a lot of different art displays as well. It was a wonderful experience, and I encourage everyone to look out for those cultural opportunities in our community to help celebrate, you know, people from our region. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. No other reports to give. We'll go on to Section 4 on the agenda, and this evening, and this is probably going to be a big portion of this evening's meeting, it's that time of year to go through the capital improvement plan. And we know it's a big deal because Dave switches from his usual seat to presenting in front of us. Good to see you, Dave. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and you're correct, this probably is the bulk of our meeting. Probably anticipate about an hour for this presentation. So thank you for the opportunity to present the 2020 to 2025 CIP. We update this annually, and give a little bit of background for audience members. I know councils all been through this at this point in time, but our CIP includes a broad scope of improvements over the near term, six-year planning horizon that's designed to align with council goals, address the needs of current and future population, and to promote our local economy. CIP is also a requirement of the Growth Management Act, but more importantly, it allows for long-range ideas to evolve from idea to concept to design, construction, and then reality. And from a planning perspective, we see this play out in the process, and we've been through some of this this year, so I think it's... 2020 CIP is aptly named because it's becoming more and more in focus, right? We went through, not to make a pun necessarily, but we've gone through some comprehensive system planning over the last couple of years that council has recently adopted, that identified a lot of the needs that you see in this CIP, and a lot of the newer projects or more refined projects you see. Projects begin to take shape in that CIP when we go from planning level documents like a facilities plan or a comprehensive sewer plan that may be based on a 20-year horizon, in some cases even longer. Those facilities and comprehensive system plans are contingent upon certain things happening, that if development does happen here, we'd want a 16-inch water line instead of an 8-inch water line, which is our standard, but it doesn't necessarily mean we're going to ramp build that 16-inch tomorrow because development may not happen there. And so it just kind of gives us those guidelines. The CIP is a little bit more refined where we start to look at where do we see development likely occurring, what are some of our problems that we have right now, what's some of the development on the near-term horizon, where's our... And you'll see some of those projects as new projects enter, where is the urban growth area expansion going to be? And so those are projects you're more likely to see where there's a more likelihood of things happening from a growth standpoint in the project, or excuse me, in the CIP. And then, of course, the CIP is a plan, not a budget, so the next phase for that is the biennial budget. And you saw some of those plans come into the biennial budget. You'll see some of these go into your update later this year. That's where council will then appropriate dollars to make the project a reality, whether that's for planning, environmental review, design, permitting, or construction, or what have you. So we as policymakers, well, you as policymakers and staff as professionals, we have a responsibility to plan, but I think what we're seeing over the past decades is that there is great advantages to the committee in the fact that council has always taken the CIP, I think, very seriously in this city. We've seen some great examples of strategic and ineffective implementation of council policy and long-range goals. Police Station, one great example, and it's not in our CIP, so that's with the chief not giving that presentation tonight, that'll be about 15 minutes, plus he's retired anyway. But it's a tool for advancing future budgets and means to better coordinate our projects. You see a lot of the projects here have some overlaps, and when we're doing long-range planning, we have a much better way of making sure we aren't tearing up a street five years after we built a new one. Also, I think it signals to the public early on, gives them some notice, whether that's the development community, or neighborhoods, or residences, or other folks that may or may not want to invest in the city. We're communicating to them what our plans are over a six-year period. And then, of course, as I mentioned before, it's a GMA requirement. It's also a requirement of a lot of our grant programs that we do, this level of planning. So all in an effort, obviously, to improve safety, quality of life, and mitigate problems, and do so in a way that's financially sustainable and promotes our economic vitality. So for many of the projects on the six-year horizon, six years just isn't long enough. One of the problems, projects we'll talk about tonight, Lewis Street Overpass, that's been on your CIP for probably close to 20 years. And you'll see it on some of these projects, maybe are going to get kicked down the road because there isn't funding that happens for them, grant opportunities. Others get moved up quicker. We're going to talk about a couple of those tonight. They got moved up because of development happening that necessitated us to build a more permanent facility, like a larger pipeline. As a matter of fact, there's a line item in here for line oversizing in our utilities, and that is just for that very purpose. Now, we don't go into saying those projects, the 16-inch line identified on Wernet gets moved in, moved up, but if they're, you allocate in your CIP and you'll allocate in your biennial budget, actually, you already have, a certain amount of dollars for line oversizing so that if development does happen on Wernet, whether it's 660 feet or 1,320 feet, a quarter of a mile for a development, you have some dollars to build a larger pipe rather than the minimum required of the developer. So not surprisingly, like I say, if a grant becomes available, if new regulations come into play, there's a lot of things that can happen over the six-year life of a particular project. So tonight, we're going to do a financial overview. We're going to talk a little bit about changes from the prior year, review the completion of our significant projects or project phases, and we'll touch on some of the major highlights within the draft plan. I'm not going to go through every project, we're just going to kind of do a summary of the bigger, more significant ones, particularly those that have experienced some change in the last year. And just a quick note on the project sheets, you know, we continue to refine those, and those are in your plan, and you do have a handout tonight, I think Finance Director handed you.
Yes.
These are the key projects we'll be talking about, but provide picture and a narrative if the project's new or ongoing, and so you're going to see a lot of new projects, and a lot of those came directly from the facilities or comprehensive system plans that we've been working on. You'll see where we're at from a funding status, whether we're fully funded or partially funded, and what those assumptions are for funding, the likely timing of the project, and some of the major drivers, whether that's a council goal, or protection of an asset, or environmental need, what have you. So you've been provided the full plan at this point, and we're going to walk through now our PowerPoint presentation. So with that, just touch a little bit on dollars. You'll note that the dollars for this plan are about 22% over the previous plan. And I can tell you that much of that's attributable to the new information derived from the completion of our system plans, our wastewater treatment plant, facilities plan, the process water reuse facility, facility plan, and those identified a lot of projects, and you may recall that we had some plug numbers in before. I think we had a plug number, for instance, in wastewater treatment plant of about $5 million a year for the five-year horizon. Didn't want to overstate it, didn't want to understate it, wanted a number in there big enough in years past to say significant investment's going to be needed. So that number is much higher than $5 million a year, and we'll talk about that project a little bit more later. Those are some of the things that drove the increase. Little bit on where the money's being spent, and if you take a look at the pie chart, you can see that more than half of it is just for water, sewer, and process water reuse. So a lot of things that are underground that people will never see is what we're putting a ton of the money here, but those are the things that help make the community work. Conclusions reached to some of our very significant studies and analysis that had identified improvements to treatment facilities, along with some needed improvements to collection and distribution system. Transportation looks like about a quarter, just a little bit less than a quarter on that list, and a big chunk of that is Lewis Street Overpass. You know, that is a significant capital investment. And then fire, you can see, we kind of held that out separate from general. General is about $11.7 million, and that's about right on an annual basis. Fire alone is pretty significant and is accounted for already in the biennial budget. Council may recall funding those two projects last year, and the dollars are there to service the debt. We have not yet, at this point in time, come to council to sell the bonds associated with that. And then parks, we'll see some additional investment with Peanuts Park, which is a significant project, as well as the Northwest Community Park and our A Street. So some completed designs, and we kind of want to talk a little bit about what we got done before we talk about what we're going to do. And lots already occurred for, as I mentioned before, lots already occurred for a project to be included in the CIP, and moving it along takes appropriation through budget from council. And some of our noteworthy things, Lewis is shovel-ready now. Mentioned that before, but I think we're all pretty excited about that. Design for Station 83 and 84 will be complete prior to the end of the year, and design for the irrigation pump station was completed this year, and you'll be considering an award of a bid in your early October meeting. So some completed projects. Don't want to necessarily go into all of them, but we anticipate Chapel Hill will be completed. Some of the Butterfield things are completed that we talked about as far as PLC and control update. Columbia Raw Water project was awarded, or assumed to be completed this year, and obviously received a couple of different awards. And Foster Wells Force Main will be completed prior to the end of the year. Staff is consulting with our engineering and community partners and our contractors. And beyond those projects, Harris Road Sewer completed. Some smaller projects like Schuman Water Main was completed. We, the lower left there, we have Sycamore, Hugo, Waldemar, Grind and Overlay. Those were projects done by our maintenance crews as part of our residential overlay efforts that the crew started this year as part of your annual overlay program. So truly, I think, a pretty impressive list of completed projects and already making a difference for our community members. A little bit of terminology we need to talk about. I think we had a little bit of, probably had one too many terms in here last year, and so we've kind of combined a little bit, but current and future debt, that would include bonds that are already issued and bonds that will be issued. It would also include bonds that you may have to raise rates, or rates where you may have to increase to fund the debt on those. Grants, obviously, those are state, federal, and local grants. Our current reserves are referred to, we're using here, as internal fund reserve, and local partnerships. One you considered just recently was Argent with Port of Pasco and Columbia Basin College. And then unsecured funding in this case, in this year. Last year, I think we were a little cloudy on that terminology, and probably tried to put a little bit too much in it. This year, we're just saying, we don't know where the money's coming from. That's just a big question mark at this point in time, and hopefully something comes up. Most of the projects that have any kind of significant unsecured funding are pushed back later in your plan. So this gives you a little bit, I think the power of this graphic is the distinction between utility and nonutility revenue sources. And you can see there's a lot more opportunity for grants in the nonutility, particularly transportation and recreation grants. Utility revenues are pretty much dependent on rates and a sound debt strategy. They're just, you see a little line out there, that little tiny line out there is the $3 million EDA grant. So every once in a while, you get a grant that might have some economic development. Well, any water and sewer project has economic development potential, but in the mind of our federal folks, very few do. And then, on the revenue side, all of our internal funds are fully secured. So when you look in here and you see funding source as internal fund reserve, those are not only confirmed to be sufficient, they also meet our target reserves. So it's not spending all of our reserves, it's spending down to our 16% to 18% target range. And while the funding status indicated on the project sheet, even another reminder, and I tell this as much to myself as the staff, as anyone, because it says it's fully funded in the CIP, doesn't mean it's authorized for spending yet. That has to go through the budget. So if it is fully funded in our CIP, you can guarantee it's going to be proposed in your budget because there's no reason to sit on it if it's fully funded. But I don't know which one's the chicken and the egg, but one comes before the other. So, yeah. Project criteria, and just reminder, and I'd sent a, well, in the CIP budget message, and, you know, I'm just receiving this document tonight, but you can kind of see, that's the source of where projects come from, you know, from you as a council policymaking board, and a lot of those things have come from the retreats over the years. And other projects that council has seen a need for, obviously, our master and facility plans we've talked about. We assess the system constantly and are looking for things, and that's typically more of a replacement, you know, rehab-type project. And then you can, you know, the other piece is just a little chunk of our project selection criteria sheet that talks a little bit about, here's a justification for the project, the summary of the project description, those type of things, whether or not it's fully funded, whether it's new or an ongoing project. And project highlights, we're going to go into that with a number of the directors come up and talk a little bit about it. For consideration of time, we're, like I mentioned earlier, we're only touching on some of the bigger, more significant projects, and we're happy to answer questions during the project presentations, and then we can answer any that you might have from the book or your review over the weekend, any of those other projects. So with that, Chief Gear's going to...
And there might be a question before you go. Might be a question before you go, Dave?
Yes.
So Dave, just real quick, when are we expecting to have some progress for approval?
Next week.
So we were talking about, so the review cycle is, we've got about less than seven days to get any comments in?
Well, we sent all the project sheets out with the agenda, and then you'd have, yeah, this week to review the plan. I mean, certainly, I mean, that's our plan, was to bring it back next week. If there's a lot of questions or a lot of concerns, then certainly we could push it out a little further.
My apologies, that was not intended to be criticism, I just wanted to understand what the timeline was, and I wanted to make sure I had heard it correctly. Thank you.
Yeah, and I apologize, that was actually going to be on my last slide, so thank you. Yeah. All right, let's see if I can turn the slides correctly here. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Chief Gear, good to see you.
Just a quick summary there, this is the total extent of projects that are put in for the next five years. We're going to go over just a few of those, but if you have any questions on any of them, feel free to stop me at any time. One's their continuation from previous CIPs is the relocation of Station 83 and 84. Funding secured through limited tax, general obligation bonds, which haven't been sold yet, but we have the debt service available. Design actually on Station 3 is 90%. We expect to go to bid in October. Station 4 is a little bit behind there because, as you know, we've moved locations a couple times. Now that we've finally narrowed down the site, it's full speed ahead on Station 4. Probably January, probably February, March, we'll go to bid on that station. So we're moving along pretty well with those. Couple new projects, Station 86 and 87 property, looking out to the future. 86 in the area of the northwest portion of the city, up north of Burns Road, probably in the county now, but eventually going to be city. And then 87, somewhere in the industrial area off Karchner, which has probably become more important as we talk about a casino and some other activity that may go on out in that area. So securing some land there is important. Also, training center, not property, that developing, continuing to develop the training center. So again, on the projects, design complete are pretty close, fully funded for Station 3 and 4 under a limited tax, general obligation bond. Right now, we're estimating, we have pretty good numbers on Station 83, at actually about 6.1 million, so we're pretty close there. We don't know what it's going to bid at, and we're doing a 90% estimate right now, so we're going to really have that narrowed down. I don't expect it to change a huge amount, but we never know. Typically, the numbers change a little bit because your contingencies go away as you get to 90% design. Station 84, we're really, gut feeling for me, I'm estimating around 11, but we put a high number in there just to cover that. And that is total what we anticipated spending between the two stations. Training center improvements, unsecured funding, we're looking at things over the next five years that we can do to the training center, not a huge amount of money, but both for the safety of people in terms of cleaning their turnouts and to provide a little more training opportunities. We're finally at a spot where we're beginning to get some renters coming in and utilizing and helping pay for the facility, and we want to be able to expand those training opportunities over the next five years so they're not coming back to do the same things over and over again. Looking at some, another burn prop, a smaller one to start off, brand-new recruits on instead of putting them in large building, and then some rescue training, which you see up in the top right corner, which is basic moving and lifting of equipment. And I believe that's all the stuff I had on fire, if there's any questions.
And again, this isn't absolutely everything the fire department does or any of these things we present, but you're presenting some of the big items of significant...
The major highlights we're trying to get on the table for discussion over the next five years.
Okay. Mr. Serrano.
Yeah, thank you. Last year, one of the big pushes was to get the fire rating down. We've talked, you've talked about purchasing more land in what's currently the county, which presumably at some point will be the city. Will that help continually keep the fire rating level low, or do you have kind of, I know it's a crystal ball question, what are your thoughts?
My crystal ball question on the rating is going to be Station 5, which we have the property for on Rogue 100, and that's going to depend a lot on what development we see out there. That'd have the biggest impact to us, and would tend to draw us farther away from where our current facilities are, which would impact our rating. 6 and 7 are two or three ratings out before they're going to impact you. And that's, a rating's every five years.
Okay, great.
So...
So in a way, some of this, we can see crystal ball 10, 15 years out.
Yep.
Okay. Appreciate that.
Yep. Thank you.
And next, I'd like to introduce Mr. Ratkow. Good to see you, sir.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Project highlights on the general standpoint, which is also something to be considered for the general facilities of the city of Pasco. Like Chief Gear had introduced, in front of you right now is a summary of just all of the general facilities projects we have incorporated in the upcoming capital improvement plan. As the mantra is, tonight, to save time, we'll go over some of the more imminent ones and some of the ones that are a little bit more highlighted for the group here. So just a summary, some of the continued projects, updated costs and new location, along with design for the animal shelter. Geesa Stadium's a $2 million project, we're about 50% complete on that one. The community center, we have updated costs and feasibility study underway. And the Wayfinding Science Program, this is a regional program with the cities of Richland and Kenwick and West Richland, I believe, and some other partners. There's a schedule change just on the basis of our resources, as well as some of the design work and the scope of work we received this year. One of the new projects on there is in conjunction with the animal shelter, and is a parking lot that would be shared with the animal shelter and expanded to accommodate the Pasco Little League facility. This is a joint partnership and some things we were working on with that group, and also part of an overall revitalization of the A Street corridor. So jumping into some of the more detailed ones, the animal shelter design is complete. We've begun working with the cities of Pasco, or excuse me, the cities of Kenwick and Richland in order to hammer out an initial schedule for construction, as well as final budget items. The location of this will be right adjacent northeast of the Pasco Little League facility on A Street. The original location was, for the new animal shelter, was directly adjacent to the existing animal shelter. However, during the design process, we ran into some significant geotechnical issues, shallow groundwater, as well as running of utilities, some more cost-effective site. We've updated the costs. Our current estimated cost is at $5 million. We'll be receiving more concrete, no pun intended, with the construction numbers later this week. We updated the cost based upon the capital plans for all three cities were done based upon a pretty elementary master plan conducted in 2017, so we want to make sure we're putting in modern-day costs as well. The Little League parking lot has been designed. We're pretty close to the finished design on that. We're looking at doing curb gutter parking, parking lot lighting, and landscaping, as well as adjacent street improvements to meet our A Street corridor requirements for landscaping and general appearance. The building you see on there is actually, it's kind of a compressed one. That is the design for the facade. It's, of course, much wider to accommodate an animal shelter, and we expect this presence along with the revitalized Little League parking lot to really dress up that area of A Street. The community center, as council will recall, this is a replacement for the senior center that the city had sold, the past senior center of the Pasco School District a number of years back. The cost escalated for, we're just trying to estimate a little bit higher for the cost of construction from the prior year's estimate, and we've got a feasibility and... And we've got a feasibility and needs assessment going on, uh, currently for the community center. This will also identify a general area in the community where a community center would be most needed. Geesa Stadium has been an exciting project, I know many of you and many in the community have enjoyed the amenities we put in for the first half of the project, which is new seating and new LED lighting. Um, we have the remaining cost, the second half, the one million of the two million for the project slated through um, uh, LDGO bonds as well, and that's, money is secured. We've issued an RFP and commenced design on the second half of the improvements, which is locker room upgrades, concession stand upgrades, uh, new sound system in the area. As well as some improvements to the right field fencing, batting cages and overall fan experience. Um, this is not only an update to the facility itself, but it's also updates that help the team meet minor league baseball standards. So, uh, my department's kind of split into two, so if there's any questions on the general facilities, I'll take them now. If not, I'll launch into parks and recreation projects.
And are, and just, it was a small, much smaller item, but uh, wayfinding and signage is part of general?
Yes, it is part of general, it wasn't one of the projects we highlighted tonight. Um, just to fill you in, we're developing the scope of work on that and just really trying to plan out budget wise, how we can implement the regional program in the city of Pasco over the next three, four years.
Well, I guess I'll jump in and say, you know, proud of uh, the Dust Devils, they're playing for the championship. It's a five game series, they're one-one and they're playing game three of five tonight. So, thanks to us spending money, they wanna play harder, right? There you go.
The sunset's helped, right?
Yeah, right.
All right, well, moving on to parks and recreation, um, there's obviously a lot more projects in the works and those are spanned over uh, the course of the CIP plan currently through twenty twenty-five. I'll go over a couple of the highlighted ones and some of the more important marquee projects, as well as uh, uh, some of the stuff that's gonna be coming up over the next year or two. Um, but as always, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask. So just a general overview of this, um, we've included the A Street Sporting Complex as uh, making it a higher priority uh, project. This is due to the fact that we, uh, we're surprised to know that we won an RCO grant for this project of three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Uh, so over the next two years, we have to spend that money from the state and therefore we will. Um, Peanuts Park, as you all, all know, the design is ongoing, we are zeroing in on finalization of that design right now. And getting updated cost based upon a ninety to one hundred percent design estimate, as well as getting cost estimates for uh, construction in, in this part of the state. Rather than uh, an overall uh, construction estimate that could take in Seattle prices, um, things like that, that might be a little bit higher. So we're getting a little bit more realistic there. Um, Community Park Northwest, we've changed the, a little bit of the scope and the schedule on that. Uh, the levy lowering along the Sacagawea Heritage Trail, uh, we've updated the cost and, and uh, begun the feasibility study on that. And we changed the scope and schedule to the uh, Road Forty-eight Park. One of the new projects we have in here, um, is the Marina Dock replacement. Over the last two years, we've replaced Dock A down at the Schlegel Park Pasco Boat Basin. Um, throughout that time, with the opening of that new dock, our old dock has collapsed under the weather. So we've added that as a new project as well and provided estimates based upon our recent experience with reconstructing Dock A. So A Street Sporting Complex, very exciting project, this is on A Street and Elm. Um, the first phase is what we're looking to cover with the RCO grant and matching funds from the city, includes three soccer fields, as well as a parking lot. Um, this will be fully funded by an RCO grant in the Park Development Fund. And um, we've uh, begun discussions, signed the contracts with the state of Washington uh, this week. And we'll be looking to issue an RFP out for design and uh, to commence this project as soon as we possibly can. Community Park Northwest, um, one of the biggest things I think we changed with the scope and schedule and cost. Um, the purchase of land, we moved up, we realized that they're not making any more land and to secure land for a large scale community park in the northwest part of the city of Pasco. Has become a great priority for the city. Um, in addition is uh, securing the land, it'll give us a little bit more time to vet out a design based upon uh, prevailing development patterns over the next couple of years. Um, so we've sort of spread this project out a little bit more, uh, land purchase uh, very soon, within the next year, uh, pending approval. And then uh, cost and development out a couple of years from that.
And just to highlight too, this is that example probably Dave was talking about where funding in the more immediate timeframe uh, is, is, but five years from now. The penciled in number of four point five billion is, is something that's gonna have to be sorted through.
Yes.
And so, so realistically speaking, uh, Community Park, something we've needed for a great deal of time, is realistically gonna be another five or six years. Even if we were to figure out funding.
Yes, that definitely our vision and we agree with that timetable as well.
True.
Correct. Peanuts Park Restoration, and uh, this is what we're seeing at the Peanuts Park and the Farmer's Market in the downtown. Um, the design is, as I said before, we're zeroing in on a hundred percent. Um, we have secured the funding for this project and uh, once we get the design at a hundred percent and the cost estimates. Um, that will sort of dictate where we begin with uh, bidding and the construction project there. Um, new estimated cost on this project is seven point two million, this will include a new pavilion, um, in between our current Farmer's Market pavilions. And um, some spots for food trucks, new amenities there, new restroom facilities and really an overall dress up of the park there. Um, Road Forty-eight Park, go, yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Ratkay, just real quick, um, when I'm talking Peanuts, um, Park and Peanuts Plaza there, um, I know I've seen a number of estimates over time. And I remember at one point in time, it was much closer to up, more like ten million dollars, we were talking about investing there. And we've slowly shrunk that over time. Has that been decreases in scope or is this just simply, um, we were perhaps overestimated upfront? What's, can you, can you speak at all to that, um, or am I just simply misremembering how the scale of the investment?
No, I think it's a combination of both, um, as the project gets more specific in design, uh, you start refining those costs and those contingencies get reduced. Um, we also started looking at ways that, not necessarily value engineering the project, but where's, ways where we could save on some of the costs there. So really, the scope of the project has not necessarily been reduced, but I think as we get more specific in design, we identify that some of those costs you overestimate on. Uh, could be brought back down to more reality, Mr. Zabel.
Yeah, I, I will just add to that, this is not a park we would wanna do on the cheap. I mean, yeah, so this, you know, we, we wanna maintain the quality that the community's kind of brought forward and, and the ideas that they've brought forward. Cause this is a critical piece to downtown, so if we have to uh, reduce the scope, it's probably gonna be more about the scope and size rather than the quality. Quality's gotta stay very high on this, so.
I recall last year, um, we, we ended up de-scoping, I believe, the uh, northern portion across uh, Lewis Street. And I think that was, um, at the time, some, some that you emphasized as well was that. We can't afford to do both of them right, right now, so therefore let's do the, the best we can, so I just wanted to make sure I understood, thank you.
And then finally to that, um, well, not finally, but uh, the next on the list is Road Forty-eight Park. Uh, we've not started the design on this, um, this is a large focal point park in um, central Pasco. Uh, we want to include a splash pad, sports courts, restrooms, uh, parking and other uh, facilities to serve this area. What we're looking at is unsecured funding for future phases, but we wanna kick in some of the design uh, over the next couple of years. And finally, one of the larger projects is the Sacagawea Trail Levy Lowering. Uh, this is one of the final lever, levy lowering projects uh, regionally in the tri-cities. More specifically known in, in federal government circles as Levy twelve dash two, but it's really the levy between Road fifty-four and seventy-two. Um, we partially secured the funding on that, over the next couple of years, we'll be looking for some grant money to help with the uh, construction of that project. Uh, we are currently working on some of the engineering uh, design for this, as well as uh, ways that we can do some better cost estimation for this. Um, in addition to that, beginning our talks with the United States Army Corps of Engineers as far as uh, uh, obtaining those underlying permits, which should help with grant acquisition in the future. That's gonna be um, the highlights for parks in the upcoming CIP plan.
And I'm just, uh, the, the, two things in this section and then the previous section too about Lewis Overstreet. The two things that have spanned even before I was on council have been, we all know Lewis, but levies as well. And to be able to see this in, in that kind of horizon and it to be completed, uh, I, I look forward to that as a Pasco resident. To, to being the last bit of the, of the many miles of trail in the tri-cities. So it's been a long overdue on this one and I can see that, start to see the end of the, light at the end of the tunnel on that, don't, don't let that one go.
I do. And with that, I will introduce uh, our Public Works Director, Steve Warley, for his portion.
Thank you, Director Ratkay, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This may take a while, we've got several utilities and other public works projects that we'll go through, so we'll try to get through this as quickly as we can. If I go too fast, please feel free to stop me, ask questions, slow me down, uh, but we'll, we'll get through it as quick as we can. So the first list of projects that we're gonna talk about is transportation. And we want to apologize at first for the size of the font, it's very small, uh, but that's because Public Works does a heck of a lot of projects. And so, uh, we'll highlight a few of the uh, important ones. One of the things that I wanna note on this particular chart, and you'll see this on the other utilities as well. And that has to do with the total project expenses that you see in the first column after the names, you'll see a number at the top there. And then you'll see the total request for twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five is the very last column at the top. So in this case, it's the fifty-nine million versus the forty-eight million. And so what we're trying to show there is that some of these projects have had a lot of other expenses already done on them in years past, including in twenty nineteen. And in this particular case, you'll see a couple of them there with uh, in uh, projects, the second column there, project to date, uh, Lewis Street overpasses, it takes a big chunk of that previous expenditure. Uh, and so uh, I'll, I'll point that out on several of the other utilities as well, but that's what those numbers are intended for. The last column is the request for this six-year TIP, CIP, excuse me, and in this case, it's both CIP and TIP. Okay, start off with the uh, the projects that are continuing on the CIP. Uh, these include the Lewis Street Overpass, which we've heard a couple of times tonight. Uh, we do have an updated cost based on the final design of the project now, and so we are moving forward with that. We are getting all of the final permits and, and designs and right of ways approved and everything else to be able to get this project out to bid before the end of this year. And so we are moving forward, I'll get in a little more of that, in more detail later. Uh, we've got some pedestrian bicycle access through some interchanges and some updated costs there, so we'll go over that. Uh, we'll talk about the citywide traffic controller update, that is another project that continues from previous CIPs. And the Argent Road Improvement is a continuation from last year's CIP as well. Some of the new projects that you'll see in the CIP include the Sandifer Extension Project. Uh, we'll get into a little more detail, but that's uh, west of Road one hundred, uh, and we're gonna break that up into two phases. Uh, then there's also the Burns Road Pedestrian Bicycle Pathway is a new project that's added on to this CIP. Uh, we'll get into a little bit more detail about that in just a moment, uh, you can see a few details there, uh, but we'll get into it in, in, as we go through this. Uh, first off, I wanna talk about our annual preservation program, uh, as you know, the city wants to maintain high quality streets. It's a, it's a very valuable uh, infrastructure that we own and maintain and we wanna keep it in good condition. Uh, we take some of our taxes and allocate it to street overlay to do each year. Uh, projects are identified uh, for near-term planning and during the biennial budget process. Couple of those projects, uh, uh, City Manager Zabel mentioned earlier this evening about some of the residential projects that our staff has done internally. And we will continue to do that as well with our operations folks, they did a fantastic job this past year. The second is the bike pedestrian access uh, category of the CIP. And as you can see on this slide, there are a lot of additional or projects related to bike and pedestrian access. The Burns Road was, Road Projects were one that was talked about last year. This is on the south side of Burns Road and we've split it up into three different projects. Uh, we are just gonna start the, the planning on those, and so those estimates are rough at this point. Uh, but we will, uh, like many of the other CIP projects mentioned tonight, as we get more and more into the design of them, those numbers will get more and more refined.
And, and just to help me out too, when you say these bike pedestrian access, these are development of stuff that has not been developed before? Or specific addition of these amenities as, as projects?
In some cases, these are adding pedestrian bicycle facilities to areas within the city that don't currently have them. And we'll, we'll go into some of these, uh, as we go into a little more detail. Um, but these are the ones that we are looking at right now. The Sylvester Street Overpass is a study at this point that we're proposing to do, uh, mainly because the existing uh, bridge that's there now doesn't have sufficient width on it. So we will be looking at how we can accommodate pedestrians and bicycles on that corridor. Uh, may have to do something similar to what was done on Court Street where we add a separate structure right adjacent to it. Uh, and then the FCID Canal uh, is one that um, is a new project that's added. And we are looking at a project where FCID is going to be piping that canal, replacing the canal with a pipe. And then we have this idea of taking the top of it after it's covered over and turning it into a bike and ped pathway, which will connect a good part of the city along that route. So we're looking at that and that's in this year's CIP as well.
Just one quick comment, uh, you know, one of the things we've talked about on the Burns Road area is just making sure to the best of our ability, we sync up those paths with the opening of those two schools.
That's exactly right, and we've been in discussions with the school district, uh, I think some of the comments you made last year, plus the fact that the schools are going in this year. Is a real big impetus for getting these projects done. It's gonna be critically important to provide that kind of access on the south side of Burns Road.
Right, I appreciate that, thank you.
Bet.
I did have one uh, uh, question, uh, for the uh, improvements to the Road sixty-eight and uh, one hundred interchange, what is, oh, that look, I don't know if that's something you're, uh, you, you'll go into more detail later, or if, if not, then no.
Uh, I think there is a few slides on that one, and so we'll cover that in just a moment. Citywide Traffic Controller Upgrade Project, this is the second phase of a two-phase project, you may have heard about this project previously, this is a continuation. Uh, we split out the project previously, uh, phase one was all the projects that didn't need right of way. This is the project that does need right of way in order to make those improvements. So the estimated cost on that is three point six million and we do have some federal funding for that project, so we will continue to move that forward. Um, the Lewis Street Corridor Improvements, we talked about this as related to the uh, Peanuts Park uh, project. And it's kind of a, a connection and a tie between what's going on and being proposed at Peanuts Park Improvements, along with the Lewis Street Overpass improvements. We wanna create a very connected, very uh, lively corridor through the downtown to connect these two projects. And so we are underway with the design consultant process for the selection, design consultant selection process. We do have some funding secured for it and we have an estimated cost of about one point six million dollars to do those improvements. The Lewis Street Overpass Project, I think we've mentioned this several times, uh, the final design is complete. Uh, we still have some paperwork because it's a federally funded project, we have processes that have to go through. So we will continue to move that forward to get it out to bid and get it ready for construction next year. The estimated cost is twenty-eight point six million dollars. The Road one hundred widening project, uh, this is, is one of those that we talked about, um, and this project is not designed yet. Uh, we do have some funding secured for it partially at the moment. Um, we do have, we are gonna take a look at the entire corridor and see what kinds of things we can do in order to get uh, bicycle pedestrian pathways down here. One of the challenges we have here is south of the freeway, we have varying right of way widths for all the different properties that front the west side of this corridor. And so it's gonna take us a little while to try to come up with something creative that try to minimize our need to acquire right of way for this project. Sandover Parkway Extension, Phase One, uh, we mentioned this is one of the new projects that was added to the CIP this year. Uh, this will extend Sandover Parkway into the Broadmoor area to uh, get that development going. Uh, the design has not started yet, uh, we do have partial funding based on the fact that we have developers who are interested in participating in the extension of that road. And so we will capitalize on that, uh, the estimated cost for this one's one point six five million dollars. And I think that's it for the transportation side of things, are there any questions related to any of the highlighted projects?
So Mr. Warley, I actually have a question, it, it, this is not on a highlighted project, but um, it's specifically related to the, um, I think it's Phase Two of the um, Argent Expansion towards Road thirty-six?
Yes.
Um, or, or perhaps the uh, traffic control at the, uh, intended. Or perhaps the traffic control at the, intended for that, for that intersection. And I, I noticed that that was, that was pretty far along. Would I drive past that? It's frequently backed up and people are, people struggle, it seems, to get from the neighborhoods there onto Argent. And I would, I would like, I'd like to hear a little bit of whether there's any possibility of moving that forward, moving it up in time.
And I think you're referring to page 37, at least is the Saracena Way to Road 36 section?
Yes, I just arrived there on the iPad as I tried to type. So yes, that's exactly what I'm looking at. I'm just trying to make sure I understood exactly, no, not, I'm sorry, not at 37, my apologies, that's.
Is it 30, was it 37?
It's, it sounds like City Manager Dan Ford has some information that he can share with you about this?
Yeah, page 35, I'm.
Good evening, Mayor and, and council members. Road 36 has been discussed as being its own standalone project for that very reason. And so currently, we looked at dividing this up into two phases. And I do believe that Road 36 may be an additional second phase that's pushed forward all by itself. We've had discussions with mostly the Port of Pasco and the airport due to its location being away from CBC. And they're very amenable to that, obviously, for the traffic considerations that we've had there.
Okay, so, so currently we're looking at the design in 2022 and the construction in 23. If we're making sure we're all looking at the same thing of project number 20011?
Yeah, right now it's. Three, three and four years out. I think I, I would share Mr. Maloney's concern that what would, from what we've been hearing also from the community, is there any possibility of that being more of a one to two or maybe three-year timeframe?
Yes, and that's been our discussion. We wanted to focus on Phase One. But then we know that Phase Two may be broken up into two phases itself with the focus being on the Road 36 intersection and the improvements associated with that intersection first before the corridor takes place.
So it's splitting into a total of three phases. The one along CBC in the Port of Pasco area there, one for the intersection improvements, and then connect the two.
Connect the two.
Thank you.
We'll certainly look at moving that, that particular intersection project up in the CIP schedule. Any other questions on transportation?
And where are the bicycle, is that bicycle part of the transportation?
Yes.
Oh, so, well, if you don't mind the, so what I would, what I want to make a distinguishing remark between is clearly doing bicycles on Sylvester Street overpass, which dates from the 60s, is very much an old facility that's existed for a long time. The material, when you're talking about upgrading, though, in the Burns area, those are recent roads. And I just want to make sure that the bicycle paths, it isn't something that we're going to have to redo. These are going to be addition of bicycle amenities? Or is this, or is this going to have to be redoing of those things? I'm doing, this is a little test to see how we're doing here as a city, I guess.
I think as, as Burns Road bike pathway improvements are concerned, that is going to be a brand-new pathway. And so it is putting in something that didn't get put in previously. As I understand it, those developments got put in before the road got put in. So that was the backside of the subdivisions, and there were no road improvements required at the time those developments went in. So then the city came along, got the right-of-way to be able to build the road, built the road. And now we're having to go back and install those facilities. Normally, they would be part of any kind of frontage improvements relative to the developments.
And I guess that's a philosophical question. So and then I'm going to, I'm, I'm going to purposely butcher this just for, to, to phrase this. If a section of Burns Road costs a million dollars and it costs another $100,000 to put in the bicycle amenities after the fact, would it have been 1.1 million to do it originally? Or would it have only been maybe 1.05 million to do as a, as a vice, to do the bicycles at, at that time?
I think in, in that particular case along Burns Road, it is probably more expensive to put it in after the fact than it would have been to put it in initially.
And that's, and that's my, that's, I guess that's a bit of my concern of this. Some of these projects, again, stuff on Sylvester overpass that is older than I am, no way, no how should that have been anticipated. But I guess I would just ask staff, because we've had a bicycle plan in place for a number of years. And shouldn't it have been done at the time of the building of the road? And that's kind of a, a soft, a soft ask or question mark. And I also think I see it also on the Road 100 stuff, for example. You mentioned right-of-way, and maybe that's a reason it didn't get done. But I noticed when Gisa got put in, there wasn't a bicycle path there. And my guess is that when a bicycle path does get done from north to south, that's going to be retrofitting and going to be more expensive than the net. So just an observation that I hope we could look at and try and do these things as we build the road structure.
Point well taken. Any other questions on transportation?
Mr. Maloney?
So I'm going to jump on board with that for one, one more statement. It's typically, this would also be built by, by the developers as part of the frontage improvements required by the, the development. I understand this is the backside of development and, and so on. But typically, both the, both the biking facilities as well as the road would be impartial, in part improved by.
That is correct.
Development community, right?
That is correct. And I think Chapel Hill Boulevard might be an example of that. Even though that is being paid for by the developers through the LID process, the point remains in that the bicycle pedestrian facilities are being built as part of the roadway.
And so by, by having to go and retrofit these and add these facilities in, not just the, the benefiting community is getting, is paying for it, it's actually the entire city that is going to pay for it.
So for example, like along Road 100, it would be good to get as many developments that occur on the west side of Road 100, south of 182, to help put in those bicycle facilities as part of their developments, rather than having to come in later, make it a project, and do it after the fact.
And, and back to my question, that's, I thought why we had our bicycle plan in place is to enable staff to watch for those things as development occurs. So I'm just, and I know we can't catch everything. I just, this, this has kind of been, I'm noticing this as a theme that maybe some things have been being missed a bit over the past couple of years.
I think also having it within the CIP helps us be able to enforce that as well on new development.
Okay, so maybe something we're also checking to make sure, maybe that we, we can become the broken record. So on these capital improvements, where's the bicycle stuff at? Okay, that, that might be helpful, too. Mr. Alvarado?
Thank you. I guess to piggyback on that, my question is, is our current practice or policy one that, these are loud. My, my, my current, current practice or policy one that it makes it optional? Or is it the discretion of the, of the city where developers would add new bicycle facilities? Or are we pretty clear as far as what the connections need to be and as development comes to this area?
I think we're pretty clear about that. I don't know, Director White might want to add anything to that. I think we're pretty clear that if it's required, if it's on our plan, if it's within our CIP, then that becomes part of the development requirements for, for new developments.
That's correct. And just off the top of my head, there have not been many opportunities for that to happen as of late. The plan was adopted, I think, in 2012, if I'm not mistaken. But.
I, I think City Manager Abel just mentioned to me again that last year council adopted the complete streets policy. So that in and of itself, again, gives us another tool to require that these bike ped facilities be addressed as part of new development and all street projects, so that we are accommodating all users of the right-of-ways.
And I'm excited about seeing that this connection start to actually start making sense for, for users. And then just going more, in more detail to, towards the, uh, facilities that are being put in Road 100 and 168. What, what are, what are the specifics on those as far as the, the design? And do, do we have that? And then are those best, best practices as far as people say, keeping people safe, those, you know? Most people don't, do not want to be pedestrians in that area.
Yes, there's, there's a couple of issues related to the Road 100 corridor for bikes and pedestrians. The first is that the bridge itself over 182 is sufficient, we believe, to accommodate it. And discussions, staff has had discussions with Washdott already about the potential for restriping that roadway to accommodate bike peds on the existing structure. So that's a good thing. The, the other problem we run into is that both north and south of that bridge, there aren't any bicycle pedestrian facilities. So that's where having this project in the CIP and looking at it as a corridor as a whole helps us to be able to connect all the dots and put all the pieces in place so that we have a fully safe corridor for bikes and pedestrians. Thank.
Mr. Schron?
Thank you. Since we're talking about this at length, I might as well jump in. I know we're adopting or working through new standards. Will those, those bike lanes be part of that standard process?
I think there will be some standards related to road improvements. I think each individual CIP project may have its own individual needs if it's a more regional use rather than, depending on the development that occurs. So the way I look at it is if this project, like on Road 100, is in the CIP and it requires a 12-foot wide path, then any new development that comes in, we would be asking that they put in a 12-foot wide path. If it was a different corridor that still needed bike pedestrian facilities, but wasn't necessarily on our CIP as a project per se, maybe they can get by with a little smaller path because it's less regional or something along those lines. But they would still have to provide bicycle and pedestrian facilities to make it a complete street.
Okay, thank you.
Did you still need a floor, Mr. Alvarado? And Mr. Mill?
Thank you. I want to get clarification on the Adams property. You know, we hear that it's up for sale, that, you know, they're putting it out nas, you know, nationally as far as putting it out there. And on here, it shows that it would be in 2024 as far as when the road would actually be built. Is that like standard? I mean, what if somebody was to buy a property because they want to put, say, a theater in there? They'd have to wait six years to, or five years to actually do something with that?
I, I think the idea is that it gets put in the CIP further out in the future. And if development comes in sooner than that, then the developer helps participate in the building of that road. And then the city's participation, similar to what City Manager Abel was saying earlier, we then have the opportunity to be able to come in, add the city funds to it as identified in the CIP, and bring that project forward in the schedule.
Okay, okay. Just appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
And, and too also, sometimes reading these, when you see it in that last position, that sometimes is a code for, we want to make sure we put it in the plan so that we can move it if needed be. But it's also possible if money doesn't come through, you'll see that move to that next year, every year that you do this plan. Is, am I remembering that correctly?
That is correct. And it also.
It being in the plan is critical for a variety of things, including grant funding, auditing and all those sorts of things.
And to be able to tell developers, we've got a six-year project to extend this road. So if you're going to locate here, you will have to provide some road improvements that are consistent with our CIP.
Mr. Maloney?
One, one last thing, Mr. Warley. When I'm looking at the, the Sylvester pedestrian bicycle access, so in 2021, we're looking at $78,000 in design, but we don't have anything further for construction.
I, I think the idea there is until we get the study completed and have a better idea of what it is we are proposing and what order of magnitude of the cost would be, then we would be able to roll that into probably next year's CIP.
So that we're, we're far enough away from knowing what that's going to look like that we, we don't? Because I, I've, I've seen, we seem to be taking different stances on different projects of putting in a placeholder that may be, for example, the process water reuse facility that may, may be a large number, but it turns out insufficient, which is, but still better than none. But when we're talking about design in 2021, we know by, by 2025, we would be spending some amount of money. So I'm, I'm.
And it's that some amount of money that I think we'd rather get a better number for rather than ballparking it now. And, and we'd rather have the study done, see what that number's going to be, and then add that to the CIP. Does that make sense?
I hear what you're saying. I'm just hearing the, a variety of projects, we're choosing different paths on that, on that with the same crystal ball. And so I'm, I'm surprised that we're, we're, we seem to be very different, making very different decisions on similar projects at times.
Okay.
Thank you.
I, I just note, too, my scar tissue left over from that overpass on 395, we, we had hoped that that was going to be a relatively cheap one and ended up being far more expensive than we thought and took longer than we thought, and then turned out to be used a lot more than we thought in the end. But, uh, so, so that one's, I can, I can see the crystal ball-y factor on that one. That was a tough one. Those are those old overpasses that aren't wide enough to, to squeeze a lane in are, are going to be tough.
Yeah. And sometimes on projects like that, that are large enough, the, the source of funding could be so different. And the cycles for those fundings can be spread about quite a bit, spread apart quite a bit. And so we will certainly be able to get more information on that as we move forward. But I think I'm understanding your comment is we have it on there for study. Let's keep looking for how we're going to get the construction phase shown on the CIP as well.
Yes.
Okay. You bet.
Thank you, Mr. Warley. And we, you've been answering questions. You're, you're wanting to go on to another section?
I, I'm here to answer all the questions, and of course, I have staff with me to help me in case you get too tough on me. And I'll bring in the big guns.
No lights are on, so time to run or continue on?
Let's, let's go. Let's move on to the utilities. So we'll start first with the process water reuse facility, and we'll go real quick through this. You can see that there's just a few projects on this one. We've, we've been to council before on it. Again, you'll see the difference between the total project expense column and the total request for the six-year plan. And the numbers are different. We've spent some money in the past few years. So that's what that is. Real quickly, some of the ones that are continuing projects are the Columbia East Lift Station and Force Main. That is currently being constructed is the Force Main. We're designing, or, excuse me, the lift station is under construction right now and soon to be completed. The Force Main is being designed as we speak. The PWRF Irrigation Pump Station, or IPS, is fully designed. We had a bid opening a few weeks ago. We will be bringing that to council in early October. The PWRF Primary Treatment Improvements, we are going through the consultant selection process right now and to select the consultant to do the final design on that. And there are no new projects on this. There's a $36 million request for the existing projects. We figured that's probably enough, and we didn't need to add any new projects to the reuse facility. As I mentioned, the irrigation pump station, I got a little ahead of myself. That little yellow arrow shows where the planned location of the new pump station is going to be. I think council may recall many discussions we've had in the past about this project and other PWRF-related ones. So you'll know more about that in a few weeks. The pre-treatment plant improvements are to improve many of the facilities there, including the addition of an 86-million-gallon pond that would go in as well. And we've talked about this in the past also. Any questions on the PWRF?
I forget. Have a light. Yeah, so we're, we're, we're looking at expansion, and I guess my page is page 74 for me. But what, what kind of, it says it allows for additional capacity. What are, what are we looking at as far as the increased capacity? Is it pretty marginal or is it pretty substantial?
There is about 150 million gallons of storage out there now. And we are looking to build, I think, 86, just under 100 million gallons of storage again. So relatively, it's about 50% more roughly. And that's to make sure that we have the capacity to be able to accommodate the increases in flows from the processors that are looking to expand their businesses and to make sure that we can serve them through wetter falls, wetter springs, and have enough storage to be able to hold the water until we can get it on to the farm fields.
What I'm hearing is it's, the expansion is mainly, the current users are expanding their business. And so we were, we're expanding with them. We're not adding new.
There is a little bit of additional expansion here related to another processor who is coming off of our wastewater treatment facility onto the PWRF. They don't do a lot during the winter, but there's still some capacity being built into these improvements to help accommodate that transition.
And, and that transition was planned for many years. We've been trying to get them to that state.
Yes.
Important to emphasize that point.
Yes. Any other questions on PWRF? Great. Let's move on to sewer. Here's a list of the sewer plans, sewer projects that are in the CIP. Again, the numbers you can see there, there have been some money spent on some of these. They've been in the works for a while. Just going through the continuing projects, the one you've seen on previous CIPs, the wastewater treatment plant improvements, Phases One and Two. The Northwest Area Lift Station is one that was on there that looks at the Broadmoor area. Road 52 and Pearl Lift Station for the Riverview, two Riverview sewer lift stations. Staff gave a presentation on that to council earlier this year. And then the new projects that are added to the CIP under sewer are the Northwest Area Trunk Line, Sandifer Extended to Desiree, and we'll get into that in just a moment. So the Northwest Area Lift Station is one that is being proposed because there's some development going on in the Broadmoor area. There's a development that needs a lift station in order to get to the new Harris Road Sewer that we constructed. We are taking the opportunity to partner with that developer and create a regional lift station. So it'll serve a much larger area than just their development. So that's what this project is about. So that's what this project is about. We anticipate a three and a half million dollar share of the cost on that. The Northwest Area Trunk Line, again, if you were to extend Sandifer, which was shown on the transportation project to the west of Road one hundred. From that point north, we are looking at a trunk line sewer that would go north up into the proposed urban growth area boundary. And to be able to serve the uh new urban growth area boundary once it gets adopted. So this project is intended and planned for future development.
Mr. Mill?
Mr. Worley, on that on that particular project, if I'm looking at this correctly, it has um these happening next year. Um, is that is that is that to make sure that we're in advance of uh street design and such or?
I think the idea is to get some of the design work done so that we can anticipate uh having it ready for when development occurs. And when potential funding opportunities come our way, that we can then uh jump on it and and get this moving. Um, we have a feeling this area is going to go fairly quickly since we now have the sewer under I one eighty-two. And so we want to be ready for it.
Because I was I was surprised to see um both the design and the construction uh next year. Um, that was a that seemed uh a pretty aggressive timeline, especially compared to some of the road things. And I understand there's different considerations now as to who pays for what and and how that and how that all plays out. But I was just I was I was surprised to see that in twenty in twenty twenty, so uh thank you for clarifying.
Okay, you bet. Wastewater Treatment Plan Improvements, I think uh council got a presentation on this from our consultant uh earlier this year. And we are uh identifying Phase One on this slide. And these are going to be the initial improvements that are needed, uh, which includes all of those uh projects that you see listed there. Outfall studies, secondary treatment, outfall project, mechanical dewatering and mechanical thickening. And so um that's in the CIP at this moment. Any other questions about sewer CIP projects?
So Mr. Worley, um, just looking at the Riverview Lift Stations, um, we potentially talked about doing um LIDs for that. I think we discussed a little bit and I understand that we're not really talking deeply about funding here. But we do have a discussion here of unsecured revenue bond as I think we've talked about as our source of funding. Given that the uh projects looking at the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one timeframe, um, I assume that if we're going to go the LID right route, we'll be hearing about that sooner rather than later. Is that accurate?
Very astute and yes, we are planning to come back to council uh to give you more specific information about the Road fifty-two and Pearl Lift Station specifically to get some uh policy direction from council on that one.
Thank you.
Moving on to stormwater. Um, not a lot of stormwater projects, you can see. Um, stormwater is probably the least exciting of all the utilities that we deal with. And so um. That was pretty quick.
Like and my my only question on stormwater too. Remembering areas that have not had stormwater that are outfall into the Columbia River as being a uh increasingly potentially expensive requirement. Are those things accounted for in this or is that is that it it what I'm remembering was this area down by the river not too far from here being potentially very expensive. Is that not reflected in here?
I think that I don't think that specific thing. And if you're speaking of trying to eliminate outfalls from our storm system to the Columbia River. I don't think any of these projects go to that level of detail. Right now we are focused on retrofitting our existing system to make sure that it operates and is maintained the way that it should. Uh, we have some pipes that are in pretty poor condition and so we're looking at rehabbing those. Uh, and then of course annual stormwater improvements as development occurs, we are providing some funding through the stormwater program to be able to help with those types of facilities as well.
So are those those things elsewhere in the budget or are they outside this five or six time year time time horizon?
Right now they are not identified in this six-year CIP.
Okay. Yep, Mr. Zabel?
Yeah, if I could, Mayor, I I think I recall from a few years ago when we were having this conversation, some pretty significant projects to try to eliminate some or all the outfalls. And so we call for the benefit of the rest of council, we'd gone through a a stormwater comprehensive plan back at that point in time. And as the more and more we talk to ecology, the more the picture kind of cleared. And so that plan, some of what we were concerned about during the development of that plan did not come to pass in terms of regulatory requirements by ecology.
That's that's good to hear then.
Yeah.
And because sometimes these documents are also can be viewed in sort of a risk sort of scale.
Right.
And so I'm going to interpret that it not being on there is the risk diminished significantly.
The risk is diminished significantly, particularly since we just did a update of Phase Two, many PDS per permit requirements. And so the the new, excuse me, design manual, the new design manual did not go where we were fearing it was going to go three, four years ago.
Thanks for thanks for closing that loop.
Any other questions on stormwater? Let's move on. Irrigation. These are the projects that are identified for the irrigation system. And uh right now, the new projects that we've identified in the irrigation CIP are the Columbia River intake capacity upgrades and well capacity upgrades. So these projects include uh taking the previous Columbia River intake that used to go to the West Pasco Water Treatment Plant, which we have now replaced with a new one. We're going to take that old intake and upgrade it to make it usable for our irrigation system only. It used to serve both purposes, both for potable water and irrigation. We're going to convert it to just irrigation only. So that's what that project is for. Uh, two hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars is the estimated cost to to look at that. And then we are going to or are proposing to look at upgrading the capacity of many of our groundwater wells. And this picture kind of gives an idea of what these wells look like. They're basically holes in the grounds with a pipe with a screen at the bottom. We put a pump down inside and we draw the water up out of the ground and it creates that cone of depression down into the pump. We have some pumps that have the capacity to get more water out of them, but but we just need to increase the pumps. And others, we have uh silting and stuff on the screens that are down at the bottom of the well that if we can pull those screens out, clean them up, then we can increase the capacity of those wells as well. So that's what this program is proposed to do. Any questions on irrigation? Moving on, water. Again, apologize for the fine print on the slide. There's a lot of water projects in this CIP. Uh, the continuing projects that you'll see carried over from last year are the reservoir storage tanks for Zones two and three. Um, they were previously presented together. We're uh separating those two out. Um, the West Pasco Water Treatment Plan Improvement is one that you've seen before. We are now ready to start moving that project forward. And you've seen the automated meter reading uh project. A couple of the new projects that are added to the CIP are the emergency power improvements. Uh, we have recognized that, well, I'll get into that in just a moment. The other one is the Transmission Main West Pasco Water Treatment Plant to Zone Three. Getting into those in a little more detail, uh, the emergency power improvements, we've identified that we have several areas within our system that do not have backup power. And if we were to lose power in some of those areas on a large scale, it would be problematic. So we would like to go in and look at those and find out what it would take to ensure that we can continue to provide water even though we may have a power outage. And then the reservoir storage tank, we haven't started the design yet. Uh, funding is partially secured. Uh, it's about eleven point seven million dollars. But again, this is one of those projects that is going to help accommodate the growth for the expansion of the UGA. It's basically going to help uh keep the pressures up and provide the service necessary for the north part of the city, the northwest part of the city. Okay. And then the Transmission Main from West Pasco Water Treatment Plant up to Zone Three. Uh, this is going to help us provide better water service to that zone. Uh, they're just that zone continues to grow and grow and grow. And we need to get water from the river up to that tank that we just saw saw on the other one so that it can serve water to that zone with and include all the new development going up in that area. So we're looking at a three million dollar project to extend the water main up there. And then the West Pasco Water Treatment Plant, we are ready to go to the first, I don't want to say improvement, the first expansion. The plant was built in order to expand it twice. Uh, we're this is the first expansion. It will add another six million gallons of uh water being treated. Uh, it includes the filter banks, uh, uh, the backwash ponds being enlarged and all the other appurtenances that go with bringing that much more water into the facility to be treated. What you see in the picture there is is the first bank of filters. And then there's going to be, there's capacity for two more. This project does the second one.
And we're actually roughly speaking to if I see where you've got the orange cones set up at.
Yes.
Do those those roughly speaking are where two and three are at?
Yep, this this where you can see these little things in the floor. This is where the the new rack of filters will go. Uh, so the upcoming plans that we have identified for the water system is the uh water treatment facility plan for Butterfield. Butterfield is the original water treatment plan. It's been uh for the city, it's been upgraded several times. But we are at capacity on that plan and are needing to take a look at it and see. Did I mess up? I apologize.
Well, we're used to public works taking up the majority of this anyway, so uh this this.
This was my bad. Any questions on the water improvements?
Do you have a question?
Yes, sir. Um, it's one of the items, again, it's not on the on your list here, but I had a question related to the chlorine safety. Is that something that you're prepared to speak to?
Project we're working on now. We're doing the design work now. Uh, and then um I believe, I don't know if we'll have it done this year or whether it'll carry over into next year. But um hopefully we'll get it done this year.
So so my question on that is um, I know many um treatment plants are moving away from chlorine gas because of the um the high hazard level on it. Um, is there a future plan to to moving us away from that? I understand that there's some interim need to ensure that we are keeping our community safe in case of worst scenarios. So I'm not not objecting to this project anyway, but is there some? Do we have that? Obviously not keyed up in this CIP, but is it is it being discussed? Is that part of the um the master planning?
That is part of the master planning is to take a look at that. We felt like the um the chlorine safety system that's that we're doing right now was important enough to ensure that we get that safely put in place now. We know that the facility planning and the potential design and any improvements later will take a while. And so we wanted to have that system in now. But as part of the facility plan, we will look at whether or not we are going to change from a chlorine system to some other kind of disinfection system.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No lights?
I would love to turn this over to Mr. Zabel.
Okay. Go go get her staff.
Yeah, no, that was uh, we got got to hear about a lot of great projects and uh we did have some upcoming plans I wanted to talk about. Cause one of the things that I mentioned early on and you heard about it tonight is what's driving a lot of these projects has been some of the planning and analysis we've done. So good news is we know a lot of that we didn't know before. Bad news for you guys money wise is we're going to learn a lot more in the next coming year or so. We have a water treatment plant, uh, facility plant in Butterville, or excuse Butter Butterfield. Uh, and as Steve said, that could identify some disinfectant issues or or other issues. Security issues with that plant is something we've been kind of concerned about as well. And so you're going to probably see some upgrades there that aren't in our current CIP. Uh, sewer comp plan amendment, uh, we're going back out on some of our our sewer comp plan. So this won't be necessarily at the wastewater treatment plant. This is more the collection trunk system. Uh, comprehensive transportation system plan, we're kicking off this year. Uh, I think we have a pretty robust TIP, Transportation Improvement Plan and an element of TIP element of the of our capital improvement plan. But uh most likely that'll identify and coordinate a lot of the things we talked about tonight with pedestrians and bikes and, you know, most likely will lead to more projects. And then uh on our I IS informational system side, we're also looking at how we are treating that as an infrastructure. And uh so that that may also impact our C CIP. We have no real IS big projects in here, uh, but that could change in our next CIP iteration. So really put those in there just to kind of give you a heads up. And we have a quarter of a billion dollar CIP plan, you know, that that could be going higher. But the good news is we'll know what we didn't know today. So. And with that, uh, any questions? I I did mention earlier, uh, our hope is to bring this back to you next week. Uh, depending on if there's a lot of questions, uh, we obviously won't be, but uh.
Let's let's go in. We'll see how we do. Mr. Mill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, uh, Mr. Zabel and staff. That was fantastic and a great way of um like any of my questions. A lot of them got answered just in the presentations. I really, really appreciate that. Um, so one of my questions and Mr. Zabel, I sent you an email on this and 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 I I promise I did read your response as well. We've done a lot of these master plans and I see that some of the projects are certainly linked to them. We are doing this project because it was identified as part of our sewer master plan or water master plan and such. Um, the wastewater treatment upgrades is a perfect example, for instance. Um, however, sometimes um I know we we are unable to or staff thinks it's better to defer some of the projects that were identified on some of those master plans. Obviously, we're not going to see those deferrals in this. It's going to be um who the the crosswalk between what is in our master plans and what comes into CIP um would take some digging, I think, for council to to try to do. Um, when I was looking through this on the over the weekend, I I started to actually go back. I was like, oh, I could go pull this master plan and this master plan and correspond these. And I'm like, that's probably not the best use of my uh my 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 time and energy. Um, so I I'm, there's some risk in deferring those projects. I'm sure that there's some of those are done and thoughtfully done by staff. But I would I'd be very interested in understanding what the balance is between what's was in a master plan and not included in this. And um would be one of the questions I I have.
Yeah, and I I think it really, any any project identified in the master plan that is of an operational necessity is moved forward. You know, and that's why you see the the uh process type improvements or or projects or facilities that are identified as deficient being improved. But there are there are projects out there that, you know, are maybe a bit more long range that uh uh may not be something that we need today, certainly not in the six-year horizon. But if something were to happen there, we need we need to kind of know what size line would that be? You know, and I I kind of gave you the the example earlier that while a specific pipe, uh, water sewer pipe may not be in the master plan, part of your CIP, or excuse me, in the CIP, uh, part of your CIP does have a significant amount of dollars for uh main upsizing. And your and your by no budget as a reflects that as well. And so if we see something, just because it's not in our CIP, doesn't mean the developer won't be doing it. We we evaluate the master plan. Uh, we know where pipelines need to be certain sizes based on the modeling that's done. And uh if a developer comes in out of sync with what's in the CIP and they're in an area where they're uh it's identified, they're they're going to have to put a twelve inch water line in or a fifteen inch sewer line. That's what that oversizing piece is for is to pay that extra. So while it may not be in the plan as a specific project like it is in the in the facilities plan or the system plan, it is in your CIP and that you have a provision for dealing with those projects that aren't a specific city initiated capital improvement project. So not not every plan in the in the particularly water sewer is a is going to be a capital project of the city. Our our goal is to have as much new lines put in, paid for by developers as we can and not by ratepayers, except for the oversizing that's provided for in in by city code.
Certainly, and and so I I guess what my question is, and it doesn't have to answer quite at this meeting, but before I I'd I'd appreciate a follow-up. Um, what I think I'm hearing from you is that there are no major items within the master plan that we are voluntarily deferring. That that because these things embark on some amount of risk if that if that makes any sense. And I want to make sure we're conscious as to what we're uh what we're choosing to do there.
Yes, that is that is true. There's nothing we're deferring that's uh priority for the efficient or effective operation of the system.
Thank you.
Yeah. But we do need, we need them in our system plan, so when a developer comes in, we can say that has to be this diameter of a line.
Certainly, I just want what I guess what I'm looking for is trying to work my way through is understanding. How do I ask the question of um our job as 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 setting strategic vision is to make sure that we we're we're dealing with those potential uncertainties in the future. And one of those um I've seen in a lot of areas is just sometimes we're deferring stuff because we have to because we don't have the money to do it. And that's fine. That's a fine way of way of approaching some of these things. We have to do those, make those good decisions. I might just want to make sure we're making them consciously as opposed to sometimes they have behind the scenes and don't necessarily make it up to a staff's or to council's level. And we don't necessarily have the expert, we do not. And we don't necessarily have the expert, we do not have the expertise to go find it ourselves.
Let's say if, if there was a project that we felt needed to get completed in the six-year horizon and we didn't have the dollars for it, we would basically put it in there as unsecured. You know, if we felt it needed to be in there, we put it in there as unsecured. And, and you're seeing some of those projects too have some significant unsecured.
Err on the side of including it as opposed to not putting it.
Exactly.
Excellent. And then the only other question I had was that I know that, um, some of these items on our CIP have been continued items or items that were new from a standpoint, we haven't started the work on them, but they are certainly items that were included in the last CIP. And, um, some of those I know have changed in dollar sign, um, significantly, and some of them have changed in scope. Um, and understanding with that, cause cross, what, what did we prove last time? Would, would understand what has changed would really hone our, um, review, I think. If that makes sense. Yeah, thank you.
Other questions? An observation or, and this is checking in to this, so this is part of a process. And this, the CIP is done before the budget and there's a relationship between the two significant, the significant. I would imagine too that when you're presenting the budget, there are some things that we're gonna have to make decisions on as policymakers. But generally speaking, you as a good dutiful city manager are gonna do those things that, the things that are presented tonight are not out of, outlandish compared to the next part of the process, uh, related to the budget or when we need to do rate, uh, rate evaluations to pay for these sorts of things. This is all part of a continuum of process that, that we're gonna be going through. And what you're presenting is, is stuff that, for what I'm seeing is there are some significant expenditures, especially in the next couple of years on some of these capital projects, but those are going to be funded or we're gonna be having the discussions about what we're gonna be doing about those. Is that, is that a fair summary?
I think that's a, that is a fair summary and I can tell you that the first couple of years of the CIP are gonna look very much like what you're gonna see for the first couple of years, or the, well, next year, next year in the budget. So that, that should align pretty well. And, uh, the, the, the next year out, 2021, uh, we're, we're pretty solid there. But I think there are some projects that we need to make some policy decisions on that are, are gonna be based on rates. That, uh, for some of these bigger things to happen in the, more the third, fourth and beyond years, council's gonna have to make some rate decisions.
And, and I'm just also sharing too, because I remember we made some rate decisions a couple of years ago before, well, all the people except here tonight receded that we were, uh, as, as a body then, we're a little reluctant on. And I think we, I don't wanna call it pull a punch, but we deferred a bit. So just to let you all know too, that you're gonna have probably some tougher decisions to make. And that's, as you're, I think you're suggesting, it's probably a year or two out before those kinds of discussions come.
We'll, we'll certainly have the discussion this fall.
Oh, this fall, okay.
This fall, we'll have, we'll have the discussion, but, uh, you don't have to make any drastic changes in the first couple of years.
We, we appreciate you, uh, buffing out the crystal ball on that part of it.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. Mr. Alvarado.
Irrigation at Zer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, it's a procedural question, um, as it pertains to the public. And, and so, um, I'm, I'm, I'm imagining that the public has access to the, to these documents and meaning, you know, if they so desire, they, they get into these. Uh, so a couple of things, uh, you know, just reading through it, uh, the readability of, um, you know, going through, uh, uh, you know, perhaps even this, I, 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 I guess I firstly would say I'm really impressed by the, you know, the simplicity of putting it on one page. And, uh, I really love seeing just that, that presentation. But then I think some details I think would get lost if member of the public would come in and, and try to understand this is, one is are these renderings that are actual renderings or are they renderings that are, uh, perhaps, uh, uh, just, just as placeholders to see what a, what a facility could look like. Perhaps having a distinction on, on, on the, on the actual page. Uh, and then, um, I think the other thing I was thinking about is, you know, uh, the thousands, uh, I, 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 I know this is very weedy, but, uh, I, it, I was like, wait, this in thousands, like, it took me a couple of seconds to figure that out. But I, I, I figured if a member of the public is wanting to understand this, it might be, there might be a little bit of, of that. And so I don't know if there's a much of a suggestion other than, yeah.
Both, both are great suggestions and matter of fact, uh, you saw the rendering on the, on the, uh, animal control facility. That actually is pretty much what it's gonna look like, at least color and angles and things like that. It was compressed. The community center graphic was clip art. You know, that's not something we've had drawn up and frankly, it kinda surprised me because we're apparently finding cooler looking clip art these days. And, uh, you know, so I, I think that's a really good suggestion to put graphic representation or, um.
Asterisks where needed.
Yeah, so something that indicates whether that is just a generic, you know, drawing to kinda, you know.
Yeah, I was just, I see it as a, as a means of managing expectations, but also clarity.
It's a great idea, yeah.
But that's the peril, it, it's much more graphically intensive than it's been in the past. And, and so maybe the expectations go, go up. Um, and, but that's a standard process also for thou- thousands in budget worksheets. And I'd imagine there's an asterisk in there in the beginning of the, the report.
Yeah, it, it should be in the report. If it's not, we'll make sure that it is, but, uh, it's, it's a, yeah, it's a good.
I also think you kinda hinted at a little bit of a question too, process. Uh, but we're gonna, talking about this tonight, where as, as several council members noted too, we've, we got the packet here and we came under our desk. We're gonna certainly go look through them through this week. We're gonna keep asking questions tonight. Process wise though, what, uh, your, your, your hope or your expectations, uh, to, for moving this forward, Mr. Zabel?
Yeah, uh, the hope would be that we can, our intention, we would bring this to you next week for your consideration for adoption.
Okay, and that we put that on the agenda and it's, this isn't, uh, CIP is not one that's required to have a public hearing. As opposed to, uh, budget, which, which, which does have, require that. So this is one that can be in our laps that we could decide as early as next week on.
Yes.
So with that then, I'm gonna ask, uh, to, uh, ask your questions tonight. Uh, there'll be another chance, uh, next week, uh, for, for questions. Uh, unless there's an objection though, I'd like to put it on the agenda as an action item for consideration. Uh, we'll, we'll work through that. If there is, uh, an excess of questions, uh, we can always work from that point. I see a couple of nods. I'll go with that way. I'm not seeing any more lights on. Uh, so I think we're through the presentation and unless your staff have any other things you'd like to bring up.
That's it. We're an hour and 37 minutes, which is about how long it took us this afternoon, so. Without questions.
Well, and with that, I think we've got about three more items on the agenda. I'm gonna suggest we take a five-minute break and come back and work with the last three items on the agenda. So eight thirty-eight now, let's come back and be ready to go at eight forty-three. Okay, it is eight forty-three and we are back from our break. We're going to go to item four B, uh, related to inter-local agreements, Columbia Basin College and Port of Pasco for Argent Road Project, actually. Item we talked about just a little bit in our last section. We'll do some detail on that. Uh, Mr. Ford, good to see you.
Yeah, good evening, again, Mayor and Council, uh, tonight before you.
Push your button. There you go.
Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor and Council. Uh, tonight before you are the ILA, uh, or the inter-local agreements for Argent Road Phase One with both CBC and the Port of Pasco. These, uh, inter-local agreements, uh, discuss the, uh, fiscal responsibilities of participating uh, with the city on, uh, Phase One of Argent Road.
And remind us, Phase One, Two is gonna be CBC side of things moving to the west or is it's gonna be Route Thirty-Six?
Actually, this is Argent Road itself from Saraceno Varney. Depends on which, whether you're north or south. Uh, they've all, each called it something different, all the way to Twentieth Avenue, including that intersection.
So, so the, there's a, uh, gas station, from the gas station to Twentieth where there's also a hotel across the road being built.
Exactly.
That, that section would be Phase One.
Yes.
Okay, and, uh, shifting, so we're talking about capital improvement project, this is the inter-local agreement in terms between the three parties. There's not ready for financial impact yet because we don't know what the, the dollars are gonna be exactly.
Yeah, we do, we do know the, uh, the numbers for Phase One, but this is the, the agreement between the three parties for their participation.
Questions or discussion on this one? And we're gonna put that on the agenda then?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll go on to the next item, and this is, uh, related to a code amendment for dwelling heights in certain residential zones. Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. As, as council, I'm sure is well aware, we've been focusing on a series of code amendments that'll provide additional opportunities for housing within our urban growth area and city limits. Council, of course, remembers that you recently approved, um, an ordinance that established shared street frontages and reduced the minimum street frontages in certain lots, certain zoning districts. You also recently reduced the minimum lot size in the medium density districts. And soon you'll be seeing, seeing a plan unit development code amendment that'll make it easier for problem properties to use some flexible standards for development. But this code amendment involves an increase in the permitted height in the R-three and R-four zones. In the R-three zones, it's currently at 35 feet. The Planning Commission has considered and recommended to council a, uh, height increase to 40 feet. And in the R-four zones, from the same 35-foot currently, current, uh, minimum or maximum height to 45 feet, which would allow, uh, easier permit processing times to establish three-story buildings in the R-three zones and four-story buildings in the R-four zones. Currently, the thirty, uh, forty foot, 40 feet and 45-foot height would require a special permit. The good side of the height increases, the rear setbacks increase commensurate with the building height. So you don't get a reduction in a setback and an increase in building height. You get both a re, uh, increase in height and an increase in building setback. And it allows additional ground space for the developer to either accomplish additional parking or open space or amenities. Uh, the Planning Commission considered this at a workshop and a public hearing in July and has forwarded a recommendation of approval.
Questions, discussion? Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. White, are we seeing a lot of interest in this as it sits? Uh, are we having to deny or grant, I guess, special permits?
There, there, uh, we recently, uh, noted that a developer was interested on a project that's occurring at the very end of Twentieth Avenue near A Street, a multifamily developer. But it's actually trying to set the stage more in line with the Broadmore Master Area Plan.
Got it. Thank you. I appreciate the forward-looking and forward-thinking processes. Thank you.
Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. White, um, when we're looking at the, the five-foot increase in R-three, um, versus the 10-foot increase in R-four, is, is that enough to create, add another floor, I'm, I'm, from 35 feet to 40 feet for the R-three?
Uh, from, in R-three, 35 to 40, it is. It, it's gonna take a little bit of creativity. We had a, a very long discussion with our building official about ways to accomplish this. But it is, it is certainly doable. Uh, what we expect to see is, uh, a series of various roof heights. And remember, the height is measured at the midpoint between the low and the high point. So it's the midpoint of the roof. Uh, so yes, it, it is doable.
Okay, so this, this will effectively, so I was wondering about that when I'm seeing just a five-foot increase in the, uh, average, you know, height. I was, I was wondering whether that would be, um, enough to have a substantial impact and whether, um, whether, uh, 40 feet was sufficient or whether like 41 feet or 42 feet with the.
No, 40 feet is, 35 feet most definitely is problematic.
Thank you.
Any other questions? And I would just note too, this is, this is a sort of a palette of things that, uh, uh, seem to have been coming across. So the, our Planning Commission has been taking, I believe, some initiative related to also some discussions I think we've had about the future of Pasco as it becomes more of a bit of an urban environment. And so these are things that are, are probably not things that we could, could or should or would have contemplated in the seventies, but something in the 2010s and twenties that's we're contemplating now. Is that, is that a fair perspective, Mr. White?
It is fair and, um, again, uh, just recently mentioned Broadmore, um, Broadmore, I, I think the vision is clear. It, it's going to represent a different model, a different housing opportunity set for people that wanna live in different housing styles. And, uh, Pasco, uh, definitely has, um, a, a, a wide variety of single-family lot housing in various lot sizes. We don't really have a good, um, opportunity for anything but that, except in multifamily dwellings as they currently exist, so.
And, and as a practical matter, if you've dusted off your crystal ball, I'd imagine, since this is specific to R-three and R-four zones, uh, any forward look or estimation on areas that are already built up where something might be, uh, added on? Do you anticipate these kinds of things potentially going in? Some existing neighborhoods?
Yes, we do, and we've had discussions, uh, particularly. Yes, we do, and we've had discussions uh particularly with Ben Franklin Transit on a a high density housing project. That they'd like to see on some infill property that they currently own directly adjacent to a uh transfer station in Midtown.
So those are the probably those are gonna be the more, potentially the more dramatic uh in the infill things are gonna be the ones that will be. Testing us and this sounds like it's an incremental thing. It doesn't just fundamentally change things. It 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 it's trying to be considered as much to be not a radical shift. To some of the existing things, but contemplation of some areas that are new to development.
I I think so, and is I I think and and faster and the more we grow, I think people are recognizing that um. The infill opportunities are real opportunities. It it's not leftover land for a. A bad reason, they're just, it was just easier to jump ahead. And so as as we look forward to uh housing becoming more expensive. Our urban area possibly not being as large as we initially envisioned, I I think the infill opportunities are gonna be very uh advantageous. To the city.
Appreciate your perspective. So no other questions? We'll then put that on the agenda for consideration as well. And with that, we'll go on to uh item D, uh Pasco Hall renovation progress and cost update. Again, the other, the. Theme of continuum, a city, the city is moving along, doing things, and we're in the middle of uh reutilizing some space. That my mother went to school here, and this is where it's been uh City Hall for quite a while, and. We're rejuggling and keep using that as space. Mister Radkai, how are those renovations?
Yeah, that's exactly right. Thank you, Mister Mayor, members of council. Um as you guys are aware, in twenty sixteen, the police department vacated City Hall to move into a new facility. Leaving behind much needed vacant office space for s- uh the normal City Hall services. Shortly thereafter, plans to renovate the empty space and update the current work were designed. Um current renovation efforts began last January, and we're about sixty percent complete. Um nearing about a hundred percent completion on the first floor. Uh the current renovation provides significant improvements. Including the addition of offices to the first floor area, renovation of finance department spaces, um the administrative and community services administrative areas. On the second floor of City Hall, the engineering and permitting um offices, uh departments will see renovation as well. And finally, the third floor will see the human resources, get some uh updates to their offices in addition to the offices. Along with some additional security measures being constructed as a part of the last portion of the project. So the primary goal of this project is to focus on enabling better and uh more transparent access to the public. And for the more externally focused departments of the city, while also addressing access and security measures to protect city staff and assets. While still remaining open to the public. Heavily staff divisions such as Public Works and Finance will see update to their office spaces to allow for greater collaboration. While remaining flexible to accommodate future staff growth. Um as we stated, we awarded the contract last January, the uh contract. For uh construction was one point one seven million dollars with two ad alternate projects, which consisted of. Uh redoing the carpeting here in the city council chambers and select stairwells, as well as uh wall protection work. Um those were approved for fifty eight thousand dollars, uh fifty eight thousand five hundred dollars and eleven hundred dollars respectively. Um in addition to that contract award, we put in some room for contingency at the time. So as you guys know, uh renovation of existing and historic buildings can be very challenging. Uh this was an old school, had a number of iterations. We did a renovation previously in nineteen ninety four. Um obviously, this is built for one purpose, and now it's being used for another. Materials, codes, technology and security needs also tend to change significantly over time. So priority was placed originally on this remodel, uh with only a minimal amount provided to additional things such as furniture fixtures and equipment. Um security upgrades at the time being thought of, uh you know, just to be minimal. However, once the contractor begins demol- demolishing portions of the building and we begin working through there and addressing staff needs. Um certainly, a more robust F F and E or security package should be considered. Through the initial phases that we've seen of this project, materials, equipment, design changes, other factors have added to the overall cost of the project. They've been modest, um but it's left us room to vastly improve security and replace current furnishings well that are well past. Uh their useful life. Through the design and construction project, uh staffs identified also a number of significant vulnerabilities in the facility. That could adversely impact not only the safety of staff, but the visiting public at large. Uh accordingly, the city manager has authorized significant security improvements, which have been designed and incorporated into these phases of construction. Uh these improvements are a significant driver of a requested, soon to be requested, uh increased in project budget. Improvements such as proximity card readers and associated cards for security access through the doors, uh leading to staff areas were procured. As well as additional cameras in the public hallways, uh leading into the city council chambers and areas where money is being handled on a day to day basis. With these purchases also, wiring and technology upgrades that were not originally specified in the design had to be purchased as well. Um so also, some of these security upgrades, particularly on the second and third floor, will uh have also required architectural changes. Which uh warrants and design changes and um will be uh added work for the contractor in latter phases of the project. While the project has addressed most of the high risk areas, other phases remain to be completed and extensive remodels such as the City Hall will always uncover unknown issues. And changes that frequently lead to change orders and additional costs. As the city progresses through the project, the age of the facility and addressing new realities and employee safety have had cumulative impacts in overall project costs. Um as noted above, or as noted previously, uh there was minimal allowance in the scope for furniture fixtures and equipment, which included security equipment. So staff will be seeking authorization for an additional five hundred thousand dollars to accomplish needed security upgrades, as well as the uh. Furniture fixture and equipment needs uh for new workspace design. Um as stated before, the work is about sixty percent complete, so. On the board right now, we have um just sort of a rundown of our numbers. Uh the original project budget secured uh financially through the REIT. Budget, real estate excise tax. Uh the general contractor's contract was one point one seven million. Uh twenty percent contingency, two hundred and thirty four thousand was put into place. Um design and construction administration through our architect uh originally came out to that amount, and alternate ad alternates came out to. The fifty nine thousand six hundred, which left us remaining with twenty five uh thousand five hundred dollars, so. Knowing we'll uncover some unknowns in the second and third floor, um in addition to upgrades to the fixtures and equipment. As well as additional security measures uh to really address uh uh sort of the reality in which we work these days. Um that'll make up the supplement request for uh five hundred thousand dollars. Um just to kind of show you what we've done so far, uh with furnitures, fixtures and equipment. Um this is an area here, if you look in the uh upper left portion, uh that's our former police station area. This is on the first floor across from uh the finance offices. Those are new offices that require uh new furniture. Uh in order to be functional. Um we created a shared office out of that space and added three new office areas. If you look at the bottom of the page, uh the bottom left, uh that's gonna be the area of accounting and finance where we've converted from offices to workstations. Uh the workstations allow for flexibility and growth as we add more staff to grow with the community. Um it also addresses a lot of the uh modern needs that an office would need as far as wiring for electricity, as well as a. Cat six wiring for data conveyance to the area. Um we've also added a a much needed conference room of high capacity. Um in this area as well. And then if you look to the bottom uh right, this is the area where. Customer service and utility billing uh will be in uh its permanent location. Uh for that area, we've added an additional customer service window, uh which should help during a high capacity needs for customer service. Um we created a quieter workspace, uh a a number of customer service employees are primarily phone based. And having a quieter workspace, but still providing for the visibility, not only for the safety of the department, but also. To address people that have come up to the counter. Um it's gonna be a significant improvement in that area. Um in addition to that, the workspace design down here has added um additional costs in addressing fire safety and data conveyance. As far as the addition of outlets uh to accommodate all the needs of electronics for that staff. Um this is just an example of what we've been uh what we've uncovered, or not uncovered, but what we've uh. Done with the uh second and third phases of the project on the first floor, and just kind of wanted to show. As counsel, um what our plans were in that regard. Um as you can see, uh you probably noticed some of the black boxes next to some of the doors on the first floor. Um these are our proximity card readers. Uh I took a picture of my card with the old logo on there, just for an example. You may see some staff with those on there. Um it allows for employee identification. Um it allows for the public to access the hallways, but areas such as finance and customer service where there's financial information and cash handling. Does not have direct public access. Um this allows staff to control who enters other sensitive areas. Um it also allows for public safety and first responders to know that if they have to respond to an incident at City Hall. They primarily know where the public is going to be present at versus where the staff is going to be at, so it helps out with that as well. Uh too, this does not preclude the public from entering any portion of City Hall. Um we are open and transparent to the public, but. Uh the unfettered access this day and age, we felt it was uh fairly safe to keep the staff on one side and and the public on the other. Um cameras were another big issue as well. Um we've added cameras, uh obviously to address the lines, the customer service counter. But if you look at the picture of the far right, uh those are the cameras that are in the ceiling pointed down at each customer service stand where cash is being handled. I call them the casino cameras when you're getting the money changed out and they 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 monitor what you're doing there, but. Um we do have some incidents with uh with some cash handling and and the public, and we just wanna make sure that um everything is being handled. Um we're also gonna install new uh ca- we have installed cameras in the hallway leading up to the city council chambers. Which um for the meetings, when we hold our meetings in here, we'd be able to see better who's coming in and who's accessing uh this room. But it also doubles as cameras and security for the new one stop permit center, which is across the hall as well. Um we're working on tying this into a single system. Um the single system, as we're working with our technology vendors. Will allow uh for our first responders to be able to tie into the system, um access it. We've got one point of contact for public records requests. Um we're also gonna entertain a vendor, too, that uh could have access to C COM. And some regional agencies as well. If there is the unfortunate uh uh incident that happens. Here at City Hall, then other area first responders that are providing mutual aid could certainly look in on our camera system and see what we have going on there, too. Um obviously, once we get to the more specifics of that, we'll be able to get into that a little bit more. So that's sort of our rundown here, um with some of our costs and the progress to date, and um I am here to answer any questions of council.
Mister Sram. Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. Um do we have a notice indicating that we're recording? Not City Council, but on the cameras? If so, um maybe this is a question for Mister Ferguson. Ought we have a notice that cameras are being employed, people are being recorded?
Uh typically, if you're in public spaces, you you don't have a right or an expectation of privacy. Uh but considering the fact that it is inside the building, that might actually change the calculus there, so um but that's a good point. Yeah, you should probably, uh we should, we'll definitely need to nail that down, but I don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah, I mean, I I I couldn't think of any particular case or statute, but it just seems like. Probably not an expensive plaque or whatever.
Exactly. Okay, yeah, no, we'll have to take a look.
Mister Zable?
Uh just to comment, I think that would be, if for no other reason, out of courtesy to let folks know. We'll we'll.
Add to the list, and do- doable within the half million increase in authority, hopefully, okay? So and that's that summary, too. So progressing, I think we've, when we do come to council, we see a significant change. That's the domino that's occurred. Because of police space moving, police moving to its own space. City growing has been uh using. The space that was built, a major remodel in ninety four, uh redoing that space uh is gonna make it so that we're. Uh gonna have space for the next decade or two. Uh and a little bit more expensive, I thought, a half million should cover it. Uh and since we've been seeing stuff, too, is there, there gets to be an opportunity uh for us to see some of these updated spaces. Uh I think if any council be interested, uh either maybe before a council or after a council meeting, I'd. Love to be able to see these these wonderful new spaces being done.
We can set up a tour for council, yes.
Okay. Any other questions or any any discussion on this? If not, I'm gonna put it on the agenda. Okay, with that, we're done through section four. We go to five miscellaneous discussion. Mister Zable, you have any thoughts?
Yeah, uh just on on the last issue, um. Are are, we weren't necessarily gonna put it on the agenda, we'll probably just incorporate it with your budget amendment at the end of the year.
Okay.
But this was significant enough, we wanted to give you a heads up now rather than surprise you in November or December with it.
We appreciate that.
And outside of that, I had no other miscellaneous comments.
And any need for an executive session?
And no need for an executive.
So then I just ask council miscellaneous discussion, Mister uh Maloney.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um we just wanna give a shout out for uh fiery foods festivals coming up this Saturday, uh ten A M to eight P M. So make sure you get a chance to get downtown and enjoy the festivities. I don't, I I will not be doing the celebrity pepper eating contest. Uh last year was plenty for me. Did you almost get roped into that?
I did.
Oh.
Thank you.
Wow.
Thank uh la- uh thank you for for being a great uh civil servant.
Can you remind us when we should be down there to watch you? All right, thank you.
At six P M, the the fun slash pain begins.
Yes.
Okay. Uh again, no need for an executive session, so uh good evening or good meeting this evening. Thank you all for coming, and we are adjourned.